Good evening, everyone. If we could go ahead and get started, if everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start out with roll call. Everybody is here. Could I get an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, we're into communications, recognition of staff students, community volunteers. Are we starting with?
M N A.
All right, we are. I don't have the right notes.
Hello. Thank you so much for having this space and your agenda for us tonight. I'm Deana McElveen, I'm president of Melville N E A. And tonight, we are so excited to have two students. One is from Woolwind and one is from Troutwine. So if I could have the students and their teachers come forward, please.
Good evening, I'm Natalie Oleschek, the librarian at Troutwine. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to introduce you to one of our Tigers of Integrity. One of the best things about being an elementary teacher is we can watch a student grow over the six years he's with us. Sometimes, we're blessed to even get to know a kid his entire life. Those of us who've been at Troutwine for a while have known Mason Kilper since he was a baby. Now, as a fourth grader, we are privileged to see a student well on his way to becoming what Melville's Portrait of a Graduate exemplifies. Every one of Mason's teachers testifies that Mason is a hard worker, kind, and caring. He notices when those around him need a hand. He's quick to step up to help a student or teacher before others sometimes even notice the need. Our principal, Dr. Henderson, speaks for all of us about Mason. Mason has a heart of gold, and I am proud of his example at Troutwine. He is the first student to help another, share, or offer an act of kindness. Our school is truly a better place because of his kindness. We are very proud to share Mason Kilper with you tonight.
Good evening. My name is Jill Skaggs, and I am a teacher and N E A representative at Woolwind Elementary. I am here to present to you our choice for Student of the Month, fifth grader Braxton Brogan. There are several reasons that Braxton has been chosen as our Student of the Month. Braxton is a responsible young man who takes pride in his schoolwork. He participates in class discussions and works hard to make sure he understands the skills that are being taught in class. Braxton is kind and respectful to all that he meets. It is important to Braxton that everyone is included, and he will go out of his way to make sure this happens. Braxton shows strong leadership skills both in school and extracurricular activities. He is a member of Woolwind Student Council. He has also participated in read, write, run, and is a part of the Character Council. He is also an outstanding athlete on his soccer team. He serves as co-captain of his team and is well-liked by all his teammates. These reasons and many more are why we chose Braxton to be recognized tonight.
Thank you so much, that is our presentation.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Kern.
Berkeley Middle School is proud tonight to recognize Luke Potter. Luke was accepted and attended the E A A Young Eagles Camp of 2019 this summer in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. The E A A Air Academy offers young people the opportunity to meet and work with aviation professionals while living and learning the arts, sciences, and lore of aviation, both in the classroom and the workshop setting. They join many other young people ages twelve and thirteen in this aviation program. The participants in the Air Academy come from all around the United States and several foreign countries. The academy activities include flight experience, workshops, and classroom studies. The E A A Director of Museum and Museum Education, Bob Campbell, says that the E A A Air Academy teaches young people new skills and instills pride of craftsmanship. More importantly, it develops their leadership potentials and broadens their understanding of both aviation and themselves. The Air Academy is a benchmark of personal experience, and the aviation experience will last them a lifetime. Luke is very interested in the aviation career, and he exemplifies all of the qualities of Portrait of a Graduate and what we believe at Berkeley Middle School. He's a great kid that is there every day and shows his pride in Berkeley on a daily occurrence. So here is Luke Potter.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, for open period, for patron comments, we did not have anyone sign up. Next thing is standing committee reports. Anyone have any committees?
We had Communications Committee, and there were quite a few of us there. Reviewed our, the standing of where we're at currently with our communications plan and looking forward, knowing that we're working towards updating our strategic plan, kind of looking at doing a one-year communications plan. So that way, doing a longer one will tie in more with, with the strategic plan and that amount of time. You know, and I think we saw a lot of benchmarks of where we're at and where we're growing in communications. And it was a, it was a growing group, much bigger than the last time we met. And a lot of good thoughts exchanged. So, what else?
I think it shows, you know, so, so much, the way the trends are going in communications in our district. And of course, it's, you know, it's all about social media. So, you know, we even talked about, you know, the, maybe some, certain things that we're currently using have already become obsolete. And it seems like we just approved them a short time ago. Yeah, so, yeah, it was very interesting.
And just what's working well and what we could be doing better. Both things were really discussed and, and ideas were, came from that, so.
I remember when I was on the committee, all the metrics that we were starting to go over. Did you guys go through all that stuff and kind of get a chance to see that?
Like, give me, yes.
Like Facebook posts?
Oh, right, uh-huh, yeah, yeah.
People interacting and all that?
Yep.
Cool.
Yep.
And also consistency in branding.
Yeah.
Jessica has put together a packet, a proposed packet, a rough draft, sort of, so that we quit having six different logos in the same school, or, you know what I mean? And all the same fonts and all the, so, it's not there yet, but.
Working on it.
Yes.
Awesome, there's a lot to do. All right. Any other committees, committees meet?
Insurance Committee, and of course, that's coming along great. We, we have a lot to be proud of with our insurance plan, you know, our insurance program here and how much we've built it up over the last, you know, four or five years, for sure. So, that's it, I don't think I was at anything else.
Yeah, I was at that with you in just second, looking at not having to increase rates until at least the 2024 time period. That's a pretty big deal.
That's a big deal.
Most of us are seeing rates go up every year, so it's kind of a nice thing, that's good. Any others?
I've got a couple of things. I'm, like I reported at the last meeting, I'm working with a, a group of people from three, I think it's four school districts. And we're looking at what we can do to raise awareness of the importance of early childhood in the county. We're looking specifically at what we can do from a policy perspective to establish it, I think, on a standalone basis. And also to look at what we can do to get some cooperation, maybe some associations, if you will, of nearby school districts that may be able to work together and, and share some resources and some ideas. On September 5th, Scholastic Organization was at John Kerry to recognize them as the 2018 Large School Early Childhood Program. They received 500 books and this incredibly gorgeous red dog running around. The dog was even taller than me, anyhow. September 16th, we also had our S S D meeting, Board of Governors. We had, first chance we've had to meet Dr. Elizabeth Keenan, who's the new superintendent. She talked to us a little bit about her approach and what, what she sees with the district and what she wants to do. We had a couple of budget adjustments. And then, the main part of the evening was P V I S awards to five school districts. Bayless, Ferguson, Florissant, Hazelwood, Kirkwood, and Britner. And a reminder of the M S B A Conference, the 26th through the 29th.
Any others?
I attended the Homeworks Dinner for Beasley. It's the program that's sort of being piloted there through that not-for-profit organization. And all the parents come in with their kids, and they get served a meal. And then the teachers, they ask the volunteers to serve because the teachers try to go and mingle, and then they sign the parent, they get to know the parents a little better, and then they sign them up and actually go to their houses to converse with them, you know, see where they can help, kind of to tie the school closer to the home life and work together on certain things with each child. So, it's a very good program that seems to go over really well. There was a very big turnout, so. And then we did not have a policy meeting this month.
Okay, thanks.
Policy got moved to our next, in October, prior to our board meetings, so.
Okay. We had have a finance committee meeting last night. Marshall was driving us all afternoon from four, four-thirty to seven o'clock. In that, went over the insurance stuff like we had at the insurance meeting earlier and reviewed that with finance committee. And then, say, the majority of the rest of it was some general housekeeping things like membership and such. So, not too much else to get into, at least not without stealing any of Marshall's thunder for later in the meeting, so. All right. Next thing we have is action items by consent.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, the reason we're all here, student achievement, Berkeley Middle School data report.
Perfect, thank you very much for having us tonight to talk about Berkeley Middle School. We just want to start off with our mission, that is to be a highly effective school of character that creates a safe and caring environment while promoting independent thinking and learning through student engagement. Every day, we are utilizing the characteristics of Portrait of a Graduate in all of our classes, in every content area, daily, and try to tie every one of those into our entire C S A plan. One of the things that we always celebrate is our diversity that we have. About 31% of our kids are bilingual. The, our historic patterns of free and reduced lunch is right around 50%. And our I E P population has been steadily decreasing since 2013. Where we're at 19%, we're currently at 13.5. And our E L L population is steadily growing. So we started out in 2013, right at 14%. And like I said, this year, we're right at just under 31%. So enrollment-wise, we have a big spike last year with our sixth grade class that was 250 kids, and they are currently seventh graders. And we'll stay right around, I think, the 635 mark all the way until they are gone and then probably be steady right around 600 after that. We currently, for the first little over a month of the school year, we have thirty, or 43 kids that have moved out of the district and 46 that have moved in. So relatively, the same. We have, for our elective courses, I ended up comparing them from 2017, when we had our seventh period day and advisory, to when we went to our eighth period day and, which gave the kids an additional elective choice each semester. And we saw great increases in all of our elective classes. I think some of them were small. When we had the seventh period day, they are no longer. And the kids' interests are really showing through on what they're wanting to take. But our art classes have increased 107% in two years. Our tech ed, 94%. And our P L T W, 96%. Spanish would be the next biggest one at a 60% increase. Our Bobcat Academy has started this year, which is based on individualized learning and solving real-world problems. What they're working on right now for their first project is what footprint will they leave during the time, the three years that they are at Berkeley. And we are also piloting with our academy, those kids taking their Chromebooks home with them. We just started that, and we're happy to say that we are having absolutely no problems, and the kids are, are loving it. So our attendance historically has been right at about 95% for our average daily attendance. And we are right there, struggling, trying to make sure that we look at different things for our 90/90. And currently, we're happy to say that we are above. Many different things that we are trying to make sure that our attendance stays up. We are continuing all the programs that we did last year and also meeting with every student to explain the importance of attendance and the attendance policy for the district. And meeting with every student that ends up getting their attendance, starting to get a little bit, little bad. So right at five, we're getting with students, and then again before they hit 10.
I'm going to go over the benchmark data. On the first slide, you'll see the sixth grade math benchmark. And the top row will show you our sixth grade students. The green being the mastery of those grade level power standards, the yellow being the approaching mastery, and the red being the beginning mastery. This is a beginning-of-the-year assessment, so this is a great tool to you, to collect our baseline data because it is assessed over that grade level power standards. That second row is our I E P students, and they're getting in those math classes. And then the third row would be our E L L students. The bottom row is our sixth grade advanced math course that does the sixth grade power standards along with half of the seventh grade power standards. The next slide is our sixth grade E L A benchmark. The colors representing the same thing. Again, the top being the total, the middle being the I E P, and then the bottom being the E L L students. And the same is true for the seventh grade, math being first, E L A next. And then the eighth grade, math being first, where the last row would represent the Algebra I course. And then the eighth grade, E L A. One thing that all departments are doing is that they're making sure that they're addressing the power standards throughout the year that the benchmark is assessing. For example, in the math department, they will be using Common Team Time to go over the growth throughout and through the filters. And they will also be doing, using strategies taught to them by the D E Math Discovery Ed Innovators. And then also reviewing and collecting different data that they put in and using the Common Team Time to collaborate with each other on successes on student growth and those benchmarks of power standards.
And then for our professional development for the year that we have set up, we ended up going through design thinking with all of the teachers earlier this year. Other examples with the standards-based grading with our sixth grade teachers that we started this year. Our innovator model that we have a STEM Connect group this semester, and we're going to be doing our STEM Innovators, our second group of them, starting next semester that, in our math, D E Math Innovators are continuing as well. We also are lucky enough to have an S E L Intervention List who is working with staff members, P D throughout the day and the, during the year to work with kids and teachers to help kids throughout all of their classes. For our subgroups, why are we addressing those? And that, I would say, the increase in our E L students that are coming into our building, our increase of newcomers, new to the country, as well as addressing our I E P service minutes and making sure that those are adequately and properly addressed. And then looking for different opportunities through our eighth period day and Common Plan times to address some concerns as well. For our E L students, we are co-teaching classes through our Social Studies and Science. And we have different P Ds set up already for them to go to the St. Louis E L Co-teaching Initiative, which will be four times a year, and also the Elevate Conference. And for our I E P subgroups, we are doing co-taught classes through our math and E L A classes. And we start our training with our new co-taught teaching, our C T teams, next week to ensure the fidelity of the implementation of those strategies as well. The other thing that we wanted to talk about is our I T E F grant that we ended up getting at the end of last year. That is our community-based program. Our grant was nearly $61,000. That provides different technology, professional development, and materials for the grant. We started out, like I said, with a design thinking where the students ended up coming up with surveys based on their interest. We took those surveys to put them into 16 different community groups. They ended up working to build relationships and community within the building first. And next week, we go out on our first field experience on Tuesday. They're going to be working with these community groups throughout the year. And at the end of the year, we'll have a Berkeley Expo, bringing those organizations back into the school to show the different things that we've done throughout the year with those groups. And so those groups can see what we did with other groups as well. We do have a video on there, if you want to see some more about it as well. And we would love for you to follow us and come in and see our kids in action any day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a quick question. Would be different, and I apologize if it was asked for whatever reason. Ever since our emails were messed up, I have not been able to get back into all of my stuff and log back in. So, it may have been asked, but what do you find for your absences with your kids? What is the main reasons that you're seeing? And I know it's not, probably not just one.
And I would say that there's a lot of different reasons for the kids. But I think mainly it, what we're trying to do is tie everything back into school. I think the kids, for the most part, are engaged and really love the school. So we're trying to make sure that they understand exactly what it's doing to us in the district and themselves to make sure that they're getting a good education, to make sure that they're able to better themselves, and which is what we all want to see anyway.
And how are you guys handling the language barrier with the parents? Because I know a lot of times, you know, we came from Bayless before. And we had a, that large Bosnian population had moved into Hancock and Bayless at that time. And we found that our biggest struggle was not with the kids, but with the parents and trying to communicate with them. And the amount of money we were spending on interpreters and things like that to get them to understand the importance of what we were telling their kids. But kids can't always go home. I mean, at middle school, it's a little bit easier than elementary. But at middle school, you still have to have that conversation with the parents. So how are you guys working through that and communicating with the parents?
And I think we're lucky enough, especially with our Bosnian population, that we do have Dragieta, who is here in the district every day. We're able to utilize her for the biggest group that we have. And then we also have lamp services that we've contracted with as well that can pick up a phone, get an interpreter, and they will help us over the phone in person, really kind of whatever we need with that. But we do try to make sure that all of the parents do understand. So if they need those services, it's something that we do have to ask because it, sometimes they are, they're conversationally fine with English, but when, you may think that they're understanding everything, but they will tell you if they're not. And that's when we would utilize those services too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment because you had responded when I was asking about what you had mentioned with the growth and the different electives and when we, you know, offered that extra choice. And how awesome I think it is just by simply getting those extra computers on hand and that you were able to expand. Because clearly, the kids are, you know.
Without a doubt. And there, we greatly appreciate it because those P L T W computers are not cheap.
Right.
And so to get an extra cart of those that we have year-round, and we're the lucky school that does, so please don't take them from us. But they are, they're being utilized every day, eight periods a day.
I mean, when you see the, you know, the growth, and I think that that's wonderful to have that exposure in middle school. So I'm really excited for you and your students.
I agree, thank you.
The other thing that people might not realize is that P L T W in high school is dual-credit. So 12 credit, I mean, if you take it every year, that's, if, or more, you know, or more than one class, it's 12 credit hours transferred into college. From, at least in Maddie's case, Missouri S and T.
Right. So, early start and exposure to changes.
Biology classes, basically.
Wow, yeah.
How is your middle school academy going?
It's going really well. It's going really well.
How many kids do you have in it?
I'm sorry?
How many kids do you have in it?
So, currently, we have, if you look at straight numbers, we have twenty-five students in our social studies ELA academy, and then we have twenty-six in our math and science academy. Now, sixty-seven percent of them are taking both. So, paper, it looks like we have fifty-one in there. I think we have thirty-nine total, different kids.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just gonna say one thing. It seemed like a very short time ago that you were here.
April, I think.
I think you were here at the end of last year and now beginning of this year, and Jean and I had asked to meet with you, and Brian Smith helped us out with that, and we met over the summer. Everyone thinks you were on vacation over the summer, but you actually had to work, which definitely appreciated that. But there's a few things that we learned that I think are worth mentioning, one of which is that Berkeley is a destination school. We always talk about being a destination district, and I'm sure it's not just the school, but a school has gotta be a part of it, where we have people moving into the area specifically to go there because of the great things that you do, part of which has to do with the thing I love that you said about thirty-one percent of your kids, I think it was thirty-one percent being bilingual. I mean, that's just such a great way to look at that, rather than a challenge, that these are kids that are gonna be bilingual when you get done getting them up to speed on English. A lot of great things that are going on there, 'cause sometimes the scores don't always show that, but with understanding the challenges better and all of the steps that you're taking to address those and really go at them head-on. And not saying when you start to see improvement to stop, but you keep that continuous improvement going. So, that was really a great meeting that we had had. Great to see it, and great job to everybody at the school. Hope to see things continue that way.
No, I would say we will. I appreciate it.
I was very encouraged and, and looking forward to the great strides that are gonna be shown up very soon. So, I was delighted.
Thank you.
One more quick thing, as, as long as we're talking about bilingual, are we a district that, do we, have we applied for the state seal of bi, biliteracy? Have you ever heard of that? There was a little clip in the newspaper, and I have it here, that you can, like, a district can apply, and then kids can get certificates to say they're bilingual, to take that with them to college or to their jobs, or, yeah, I have it here, I'll share it with somebody, but.
No, that's perfect, and I am not sure.
It was in the post.
So, Peggy, we are in the process, I actually have a group of counselors at EL, or EL and foreign language teachers from both high schools, and okay, we're starting to make an initial plan on how we're going to assess and how people evaluate a scoring guide that would be equitable for kids to do that, and we just have to finish that up and get an application to the state.
To the state, yeah. Okay. I just happened to see it, and then I took a picture of it and then forgot about it, until now. So, thank you.
I love it when we ask a question and they're already working on it. Perfect.
I figured you were, that's why I forgot about it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the federal programs data report. Hello? How did you get lucky enough to present on this?
I know. Well, I love federal programs, so I'm happy to share. I may be one of the few. All right. Here we go. Federal Programs Dashboard. Federal Programs are Title I, II, III, and IV supports that the district receives from the federal government. So, for Title I, when we're speaking about Title I, it provides financial assistance to schools with high number of, or per high percentages of students from low-income families, to help ensure that these children meet the challenging state academic standards. So, federal funds are currently allocated through four statutory formulas that are based primarily on census data, for the census poverty estimates and the cost of education in each state. So, just a plug that we should all fill out our census next year. So, here is data from the last four years on Title I and the buckets that we're spending them on. So, and for our, our Title I schools, we do, all students qualify in our Title I schools, which is Beerbaum, Forter, and Beasley. And they all qualify for services in reading and SEL support, so those are our focuses. Funds this year are used to be paid out of salaries for eight-point-five reading teachers who work directly with the Title I students at those three schools. We went from paying ten-point-five last year to eight-point-five this year. And we did not reduce the number of teachers there, but the district did pick it up in their budget for paying for some of these to free up monies to be put in other buckets in Title I. As you can see in the next, down from salaries and benefits, you can see that we do have a required set aside by the state. It is a one, one percent for parent and family engagement. We have two events, one in the fall, one in the spring, for reading nights for students and parents at the three schools, and then they do, they do the individual school nights in the fall, and then one joint event in the spring. We have also focused in on supplemental materials this year in reading and SEL to meet students' needs, and also professional, professional development training in those areas also. We do, we are required to have a set aside for homeless students and families in transition. So, last year, we were compliant with the federal government guidelines, and, but there are some DSE recommendations, so we did reevaluate that, and we did increase that number this year. Adam did run some numbers for me right before this, and it's interesting, right now we have two-hundred-and-forty-eight students in transition, and that's actually went up thirty-one students in the last thirty days. So, there is definitely a need. And then we also do have non-public students who reside in our, in our district, who can be eligible for Title I funds, and that does pass through the school district. So, students who live, reside in our school district, they can qualify for services. Each school does have their set aside. It's based on enrollment and the formula, formula through the Department of Education, and non-public schools are required each year to apply for these services. So, for Title II, Title II funds are used to pay for professional development workshops and conferences for effective strategies, instructional strategies. So, you may see the different buckets we have here. In two thousand sixteen-seventeen, we did pay for subs and attending trainings, that's now being paid for out of Prop R funds. This year, we are using Title II funds to pay for our discovery education contract, which is grades four through eight math PD for teachers and administrators. So, that's the big chunk of that. There is also a non-public, a non-public portion of this also, and again, the non-public schools do have to apply for this. And the non-public schools have to reside in our boundaries to receive Title II funds. So, Title III, the purpose of Title III is to ensure that our limited English proficiency, it's to ensure that those students have a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain high-quality education and reach those challenging academic standards. So, interesting, this year, we have one-thousand-five-hundred-and-nineteen students who qualify for EL students, or EL services. And as Jim said, we do, you know, we do have an increase. We're up almost five hundred students from last year, which is very interesting. We have eighty-eight newcomers this year. They've been in the country less than thirty years. So, and eighty-eight newcomers from last year is up, is up twenty students. So, that's a significant amount of students. Fifteen percent of the Melville School District population is considered ELL. This year, we are focusing on, for salary and benefits, we did pick up one-point-five teacher FTEs, and we do have coaching stipend within the salaries and benefits. And as Jim did mention, we do have, we're paying for subs for the co-teaching trainings. That's between the EL teachers and the general education staff, and we've been involved in that for four years now. Through purchase services, we are sending EL teachers and their coach to conferences and trainings based on our growing EL population. And then the materials are just supplemental materials distributed among all night team buildings. And again, there is non-public funds that are given to schools who do qualify, non-public schools. And lastly, lastly, we do have Title IV. It's intended to improve student academic achievement, providing all students with access to a well-rounded education, improving school conditions for student learning, and the use of technology to improve, improve academic achievement. So, our focus this year is social-emotional learning. For purchase services, we are continuing to purchase that social-emotional learning dashboard to help staff identify needs of students. It speaks to the social-emotional and safety needs of our district. As you can see, we did go down in materials. We have transferred thirty-four thousand dollars to Title I this year, to further the educational opportunities for reading and SEL, which is a direct impact on those academic pieces for Title I schools. Last year, we did pick up college and career visits in this, in this, in this title fund. This year, that will be picked up by Perkins or the district. So, we have not cut that, but it will be in a different area. And then we do have non-publics that do utilize Title IV money. They do have to register with the state. So, just some overall funding slides. These are the slides to show the total numbers of, a number of funding over the last four years. Title I has decreased, while Title II is similar. Title III is also decreased, and then back to Title IV, where we did transfer those monies to support reading EL efforts. And then this slide shows the overall funding totals for the last four years, so an overall view. We're almost two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars declined from two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year to now. So, that's what I have for you today. Any questions?
I have one quick one with federal funding. Is that decrease driven by federal, or is there something on our side that's present that's going to happen?
Not by our side. I, as Dr. Gaines had mentioned last year, it's just rotation of funds, and so, you know, that's just allocated just by what the government, I think the government needs. So, I, I don't think it's anything we're doing on our end. We're, we're compliant with the, with the government, and we know, you know, we, so we're not doing anything on our end. We're just.
I was saying more, if our numbers had changed, that was constantly had to go down, because it sounded like we didn't have a decrease in need.
No, we do not. No.
So, it's a formula driven, where, how, part of that formula is very much for Title I, and then you've got that ELL piece for Title III. One of the things that's happened, not just in the search, but in other states, it's at the state level, they're now capturing a bigger portion of total Title I dollars in order to focus some of those dollars in the ELL and priority schools. So, that's the part of it. But also, moving back to some of the factors that are often mentioned are really the kids, because of that formula, next year it will be, or not next year, but starting in January, it would be really critical that people fill out their census. We've heard some census people talk, and the kind of simplest way to describe it is if I fill out census and Tori doesn't, we, as a community, just lost resources. Or every person who doesn't fill it out, that's fewer resources flowing into your.
So, are the funds by community, when, so when you refer to non-public funds, do the, so, without sounding, like, I don't think they should have the funds, oh, so we have one pot, and if they are awarded, some of, some of the, it all comes from the same pot for our community, is that correct? Or is it over and above? Does that make sense?
It is over and above. So, we're just the pass-through from the state.
Okay, so they apply, we get the extra money, and it passes through us?
Yeah. So, we don't get that money. That's not money coming off the top. That's just money going for them. We're just the pass-through.
In addition to our money. Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, professional development report.
Good evening. I am here tonight to present our annual professional development report. So, you can see there are, as part of this report, we try to include a variety of pieces, such as how does it align to our strategic plan, things like our summer academy falls within this. It's important to me that we report out on our financials, specifically what is it that we're spending our money on, and also have tried to include some extra bits of information, a lens, so to speak, on what does high-quality professional development, and what are the expected benefits. So, when you spend money, you also have an intention of like, well, what do we get for our money? And one of the last pieces that I'll, I'll share with you is more of an educational piece, and that is currently what do our employees partake in? What are the requirements by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as compared to, you know, what is the provisional, or temporary, or certified, or administrator? All those different pieces have different requirements, so I'll take a moment to kind of show you what, what, how do we compare basically. So, to begin, our, our professional development plan is really aligns around student preparation and teacher support. Really, the first two goals of that are our primaries, but again, as a reminder, the effective and efficient piece, and that's just using our monies efficiently and not in a wasteful manner. So, if we start jumping into each individual level, our, starting with our early childhood, and working our way up through our high school, each individual school, each individual level has a piece of that. And so, at the earliest of levels, we really focus on kindergarten readiness, when we're talking about early childhood. And so, you can start to see some of the, some of the big overarching goals, whether it's reading training or math curriculum writing. We don't, I'm not getting into specific products too much here yet, but this is, this is where our focus has been. It is fairly wide-ranging, yet I think it's, you know, there's some consistency between levels. So, you know, reading is supported with curriculum writing, which is supported with gateway to writing, and so it, there are some pieces that certainly tie themselves together in a K-12 or pre-K through 12 fashion. There's also another way to look at it, and that's what are the things we're doing for all of our employees? And so, this year, we reinvested in our 4E training, in terms of our safety training for every single employee in this district. Things like new teacher orientation and the Beginning Teacher Assistance Program. We know how important that it is for new teachers or new teachers to our district to have a really strong foundation and a good start. So, there's money that we obviously invest in them, not only because some of it's a requirement, but because we know it's the right thing to be able to do. Other pieces that we have include some technology training, whether it's the Melville Educational Technology Training, whether it's a conference like the International Society for Technology and Education, or looking at concepts like transformation in schools, and what is, what do future-ready schools really look like? Or even something as simple as our leadership development program. So, these are opportunities that really, throughout pre-K through 12, our employees, our teachers, our administrators have access to these types of programs across the board. So, drilling down a little bit more, we start talking about, well, what do we do during the summer? And so, with regards to summer, we have about seven-hundred-and-fifty certified employees, give or take. And so, we had about fifty-seven percent of them who took advantage of doing something during the course of the summer, at least related to our summer PD program. Some of that was we send folks out, some of that was we keep folks here on campus. So, we do kind of a mix and match of some things. But you can see some of the big things that occurred over the course of the summer. You can also see the level in which it was impacting. So, a lot of the work was really, you know, K through 12, because it wasn't just solely focused on high school, or it wasn't solely focused on a middle school. We really tried to take, you know, what-do-you-need approach, and many times, what do you need was also a K-12 approach. From a financial standpoint, you can see on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see what our final expenditures were during the eighteen-nineteen school year. We include stipends, salaries, benefits, purchase services, and materials, all as part of that. And so, you can also now see the, what we have proposed, and beginning with the nineteen-twenty school year. You can see we have a little bit more invested in terms of stipends and salaries, a little bit less with purchased services. Simply what that means is we're finding ways to be able to do more of that work here on campus with our people, as opposed to just solely sending people away. We still obviously invest in sending people to other places and seeing other things. We're just finding a greater We're just finding a greater opportunity to empower more of our folks, whether that's taking Sadie Lewis and, you know, creating a PD team around her that can do some of the things that she does, because she's one person. We have eighteen, nineteen schools, and sometimes it's hard for her to be everywhere that everybody's asking for. So we're finding ways to be able to provide training and empower more folks that can do some of the things in which she does, to be able to make them more of an expert in particular concepts. When you drill down to it, where do we spend our most of our chunk of our money, our biggest investments? You can see, obviously, a lot of it falls with discovery education and the investment in both high school and middle school STEM innovators, plus our math innovators. But you can see that there are other areas that we really feel very strong in and we invest in, such as our support staff. We don't always think about professional development from a support staff perspective, but our administrative assistants and others also require professional development to do their jobs too. And so we have taken more of an intentional focus in the last couple of years to be able to make sure we invest in that. At the same time, things like, you know, the applied learning that people really like to see, such as Project Lead the Way, you know, standards-based training, there's just, there's some of these, I guess one could consider one-offs, but to me, they all really fall within our strategic plan. So whether that revolves around, you know, teacher effectiveness or, you know, really student achievement, there's a very specific reason why each of these things appear as part of this presentation. So these are not things that are just in isolation, really. Our concept is really to try to fold these things around and make sure that they all line up with each other. One of the questions that came up before was about expected benefits. And so recent research from two thousand seventeen suggests that there are a total of seven things, that if professional development has these seven things, that it's really highly effective and very successful. And so things like content-focused, whether it incorporates active learning, whether it supports collaboration, if it uses effective practices. And again, these aren't necessarily things that you'd be like, Brian, that is rocket science. I know that it's not. But these are things that research is finding time and time again that are extremely important to effective professional development. And that's what we're obviously going for, is providing effective professional development. Feedback, reflection, sustained duration. So one of the things I wanted to try to do is put into context the things that we're doing and where does it fall? Are we, you know, are these things, it made me think a little bit, like, are these things, does it start to meet those criteria? Because obviously something that meets all the criteria, I think, is very, very effective. And if things are only meeting a limited number of criteria, then it makes us start to look at things. And if it's meeting no criteria, then it makes you really think, well, why are we doing that? Because it gets us to start asking questions about these things as well. So within the grid, the first four, you can see content-focused. And so I have a list of those things and I, you know, you can refer to the bullet points in your presentation. But content focus was obviously a very heavily influenced part of this. Active learning, you know, where there's a lot of application and hands-on learning, those things, I think, are always harder to be able to find, but we know that they're very relevant. Concepts that support collaboration, I think, have a fairly significant foundation here. Models, effective practices, you know, I think is certainly very important. And we have things like Unisys Study and Phonics First and Standards-Based Grading, you know, some, and Continuous Classroom Improvement. There are things that are rooted in that. Also, providing coaching, which I think is a huge part, so it's not just you go, you listen, you come back. It's you go, you listen, you come back, you practice, somebody else watches you, they give you feedback on that, you go back to the drawing board, you rethink some things, you try it again, people are coaching. So there are, you know, there's a lot of our investments that revolve, or that involve coaching as well, from discovery education, the math innovators. We have trained trainers who will go in, we have instructional coaches who will help, obviously, on certain topics. So there's a, there's a pretty intentional and significant investment that we're trying to make here. Offers feedback and reflection and sustained duration. I had to ask some of our folks, because they have certainly been here longer than what I have. But how long we had been doing some of these things and the things that we were doing, I thought were particularly important, things like PLTW, we've been doing for seven years, Continuous Classroom Improvement, we've been doing for at least three. And so the things that I think are making some differences in the long-term trends are the things we also are choosing to be able to invest in long-term. And that's really important. You know, the things that we, we invest our money in is where we expect that we're going to get the most bang for our buck. And things like, you know, 4E, safety training, well, we don't think about the, you know, what's the benefit of that? Well, I think it's very obvious, the benefit, keeping our kids safe, keeping our teachers safe. That's, you can't put a price on that. But things that are academic in nature, from high school STEM, middle school STEM, math innovators, Unisys Study and Reading and Writing, STEM TQ, writing, reading, math, there are a lot of foundational pieces to this as well. And there's one last piece that I didn't have on the slide, but it made me also think, well, how do we evaluate? So we offer teacher feedback, surveys after each of our professional development opportunities, and our team takes a look at all of those to determine how effective was the, was the topic? How effective was the presenter? Because we know that if we have a topic that really is really good, or if it was not really good, we try to make changes. And if we have a topic that's really bad, our teachers are going to let us know like that, what's, what was the relevance of that? So we look at all those things. And so, you know, that's, sometimes I don't think people realize that, or they believe us, but we really do look at every single last one of those feedbacks to ensure like what we're trying to do is being listened to and that there's a reason for it. We're also starting to look at the Baldrige work and really trying to think about leadership and strategic plan and ultimately results as part of this, because if this is not being effective and we're not getting results, then we're not doing the right things. And then I guess the last lens really is to say, there, there's professional development we have to do that's mandatory, there's professional development we have to do that's suggested, and there's professional development that we do that's desired. And my job within our department is to balance all those opportunities. So the last thing, just as an educational piece, is the DESI Required Professional Development Hours. So I went ahead, I was on DESI's webpage and just tried to compile all these so that you could take a look at, well, what are the requirements for each person and their roles? And so you can see whether you're Adult Ed or whether you're Student Services, you can see in order to get your initial certification, you generally need thirty to one-hundred-and-twenty hours over the course of four years, so, you know, basically ten to thirty hours per year to reactivate, to get career. And what we're offering our employees, all of our employees, is at least forty-plus hours of professional development annually. And so we are, you know, I wouldn't say we're well above and beyond, but we certainly take that opportunity to be able to teach our staff seriously, and we always looked for ways to be able to try to carve out a little bit more, because we know that, just like the things that occur in our classroom, the teaching opportunities are really important when it comes to professional development. So I'd be open to any questions you may have.
I have a question. The leadership development that is offered, is that group, how many people are involved in that? And is that group current leadership or those who aspire to, or a combination?
Sure, that's a great question. So we're in year two of the Leadership Development Program. Last year, we had thirty-two individuals, and these are both certified and classified individuals. We had folks that were administrative assistants, we had folks that were carpenters, we had custodians, we had teachers, we had a little bit of everybody. And in the year two, we have another thirty individuals who are part of this year's particular cohort. It's a year-long experience where we mix up ninety-minute sessions monthly with an every other month full-day experience, where they're also getting opportunities to be able to shadow individuals in the area in which they have interest. So teachers sometimes are interested in curriculum, so they may visit with our curriculum directors and really start to learn what that job entails. Or you might have a building secretary who may aspire to be, you know, you know, somebody like Sue. And so Sue will, you know, may take somebody on in the process. And sometimes it's taking more than one person on, because sometimes folks have the same aspirations. So we take each of our individuals, we try to place them appropriately, we get feedback from them in terms of placing them to the positions that they're looking for. Not necessarily, I want to be with this particular person. We try to, we try to frame that around, tell us what you are interested in doing, not who you're interested in being with. So that way we can appropriately place them.
And how does one go about getting into the Leadership Development Program?
There's an application towards the end of each year. So we go through all of our applications. It is, it is purely, it's not, certainly not mandatory thing, it's purely voluntary. But we've had, you know, we had to turn people away in this, in the process of both years to be able to say, you know, this is, this is where we're at. We have a lot of interest. And so just within the first two years, we've been able to have an impact on, you know, sixty-two. And we're just in the beginning parts. We did, we do a July three-day training, and then we start in August, and we, so monthly, we do ninety-minute full day, ninety-minute full day all the way through May. At the end of May, we have a, we have a ceremony last year. Mr. Shartner was, was willing and gracious enough to be our final guest speaker. We also tie in speaker series as well. So we've had executive directors from Ed Plus, we've had Division One college football coaches, we've had vice presidents of major organizations. So we also try to tie in a speaker series, so the leadership is not just seen as an educational experience, it's also just seen as a leadership experience.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
Brian, with, when I look at the type of training you pointed out, I can see some, there's some discrete skills that, that you could take a look at, but most of it looks like it's just awareness and it's, here's how you can do it another way, just to kind of change consciousness and give you better ideas and different approaches. How do you, how do you get feedback in classroom observations to get a feel for that? I understand the need for the feedback on the initial training to just to get an assessment of if it was, if it was worth the time for what you got out of it.
Sure.
But in the long-term, are there any, any things you can look for in a classroom observation that kind of give you a tip-off? I mean, there might be a few discrete skills, but how do you recognize approaches and interactions and relationships in the classroom?
I think the biggest look for is, when you're looking and you walk into a classroom, would be student engagement and active learning. So student, you want kids to be engaged in the activity in which is going on, and you, you know, we know that active learning, we saw it, it was one of the pieces of, of high-quality PD. Those are the things that really we try to focus on providing. Active learning, sometimes when you're in a professional development setting, is not always the easiest thing, because some of our professional development can still be a lot of sit and get. But we know the best professional development that we have is when we're not doing sit and get, and we're actually up doing things and learning things and talking through things and showing collaboration and having it be of sustained length. So it's not just, I went to this one-day conference and I came back and it changed my world forever. That's not usually what happens. It's a more of a significant investment. We also use our professional development needs assessment from the teachers. So we, again, we use teacher feedback to say, they have criteria that they, they let us know that if our professional development is or is not meeting these particular criteria. And so we use those results. And again, I'm not necessarily sure if everyone realizes that the feedback the teachers give us drives a lot of the planning that we do, but it does.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ryan, you know, I see the sustained duration. What, what do you, what is, maybe you said this and I missed it, what is sustained in this context?
I think in this context, it's, you know, where you continuously invest in over a long period of time. Now, some of the things that we've done, we haven't done for a long period of time. There have been some things we're bringing to the table that I think have, will help us with some students, like Phonics First Training, which is another additional intervention for students who struggle with reading, because it's a little different than the leveled literacy intervention that we do. So that's, we haven't been able to do certain things very long, because some things are just relatively new, I guess, underneath the time that I have been here. But for the things that we really have invested in, we have invested in the right things in the last four or five years. You know, and so some things we're coming back around to, to make sure we're doing it. And we're looking for opportunities to expand upon certain things, such as continuous classroom improvement. We do it K-5. I'd love to be able to start to see us do it further in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. And rolling out a plan to be able to do that, I think, in the future will be something we need to focus on.
And so if one of our teachers, let's say, did professional development funds this year, they want to go delve into it further next year, would they do the same thing again?
It's, it's not necessarily intended on doing the same thing again, but I think it's-
In depth, in more depth?
Yes, there, there are always future opportunities to be able to learn how to do things a little bit better. And so some of it's just foundational, just so that we know how to be able to do things. Think of it like phase one and phase two. You know, we're doing some co-teaching plans, this has, I've been referred to it as phase one. So phase one is so we understand what it is and kind of how to do it. And then phase two is really like getting our hands dirty and really start to figure out how to create good partnerships to help kids learn.
Another way to think about that same concept is move from introduction to implementation to institutionalization. So you know, if I was the timeline, could it be to get there four to six years in all the time?
I was gonna say that. Right. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
We can stop calendar in just a minute. So this one won't take nearly as long.
You got the next one too?
I have the next one.
All right.
Do we need to approve it?
Oh, is there a?
Yeah. Sue, do we need to approve it? The recommendation?
To accept it.
No? I'll do it. I move to formally accept the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty professional development report as is presented.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
So we have the brown mark in the beginning of June, what happens to summer school if we're late? And we have snow days.
We're not in calendar yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were on the calendar.
No, we're getting there. We're getting there.
Wait for it, wait for it.
I thought you said next and then never.
Yeah, but then I said there was a place to write that we were supposed to approve this, and so that was, sorry.
So now let's go back to all in favor. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass the seven.
Now the calendar.
That's a great question, because I was gonna ask that.
Okay. So now let's talk just quickly, and I'll answer any questions you may have about revised the two thousand and twenty-one school calendar. You have as an attachment, I think, within the board docs, the, what we would propose to be the two thousand and twenty-one school calendar. And just as a quick reminder, how did we get here? State laws changed effective in July to be able to, July one of next year, to be able to ensure that the tourism piece of the law is going to be put in place. So it'll, it requires us to start no earlier than fourteen days before Labor Day. So based upon that, our original start date was going to be August thirteenth. That pushed us back to August the twenty, at least the twenty-fourth, and technically, based upon the calendar that you see, would be August the twenty-fifth. So it'll be a Tuesday start. And so I tried to give you in terms of your notes, just kind of an old versus new, old on the left, new on the right, so you could see at least some of the highlights. Obviously, I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have. There are certain things that our committee, we had a committee, about twenty-five folks that met a couple of times over the last few weeks, involving parents, teachers, administrators, support staff, to be able to review all this information and to try to be able to make sure that we had the requirements of one hundred and seventy-four student days and one hundred and eighty-two teacher contract days. Based upon all other extra pieces, we need to make sure we, we wove into it. The committee was successful in that, so we have a calendar that certainly meets all that criteria. I think anytime you start making calendar changes or calendar proposals, you're never going to make everyone completely happy. So, and then when you put the additional restriction of like trying to squeeze it in a little bit more, obviously, that potential of having to go to school in June is there, but it's going to be there for every single district in the entire state. That is not just a Melville problem. So we tried to be mindful of all that, listen to the committee's recommendations, and ultimately, this was where we had landed. So I would be open to any questions you may have.
There you go. All right. So what about summer school if we have snow days?
So summer school, remember this, this coming summer, the June, well, June of two thousand and twenty, going into the two thousand and twenty-one school years, also going to be a particularly long school year. So not only the summer school twenty twenty, but also the summer school potentially of two thousand and twenty-one. We have the ability to flex when we do our summer school opportunities. And so our original plan is, and what it always has been, is to try to begin that and do that during the month of June as much as what we possibly can. Try not to bleed over into a different fiscal year, but sometimes that piece might be a little bit inevitable. And so when you take a look at what June two thousand and twenty-one would hold, there, you know, it's Wednesday, June the thirtieth, and depending on, depending on how, you know, some snow days would be, because the committee had the opportunity to be able to build in some potential snow days, but with it being squeezed both ways, they, you know, it was difficult, because you set a break and you say, you know, we will have this break unless we have to use a snow day. And then if you just have to use a snow day, then you don't get the break. Well, sometimes it's the communication- Well, sometimes it's the communication of, well, we already planned a break. Or we already planned a vacation, or we already planned this. And so, the committee felt very strongly to try to keep intact the schedule as the schedule is, so it was clearly communicated. And that, you know, snow days would be tacked on towards the end.
Was there any consideration, and I don't know the logistics of it, but extending the school days opposed to running so long and laid in it?
The, the concept came up. We thought that extending our days would also be something that we would need to make sure that we had full support of with regards to teachers and support staff and everybody else. And the folks that were in that room did not necessarily feel like they wanted to be the one solely at that moment in time to be able to make that decision without it being discussed much further. Because remember, this particular, the original one was approved, you know, basically December of last year. And so, we knew that we needed to be able to communicate the 2021. So, we were under the, you know, gun, so to speak, a little bit with regards to time. There were also other concepts that came up like, well, what about an hours-based calendar? And those are all doable types of things. But, those are all very unique concepts that sometimes there aren't a lot of examples of that. So, if you extend the school day, there are examples of that. But, the committee was just not ready, I think, to fully make that decision of, well, let's do that, let's extend it by 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 40 minutes. And then, all the logistical things that come from that extension of that, from parents to community to transportation to all of the, could we make it work? I think you can make anything work. It just wasn't decided at this moment in time. But, it doesn't mean that it couldn't be considered for future calendars.
I'm just looking at, no, we don't want to bleed over into a new calendar year for us, which is summer school going into July. But, I also look at families that try to schedule things and a lot of sports. Everything is still going on through June. So, you can almost get through the month of June okay. But, starting in July, if we have to bleed over, how is that going to reduce our summer school numbers if we're still in July in summer school? And then, is, I guess I look at, was there a need in a rush to do the calendar and have it ready for right now, opposed to 30 days of looking at a few more opportunities?
So, we already had a calendar for 2021.
Right.
So, the simplest solution was going to be, you gotta move it back seven days by law.
Right.
Right, so let's just swap the seven days. So, that was the simplest thing to calendar enable that a little bit more deeply to pick up other, other little things. So, looking at the whole big structure of calendar was not something we wanted to really dive into. What we had, the two of us, and then talking about, is that we kind of got in this schedule and it was kind of our plan, then in December, we were talking about the 2122 calendar. But, given the work around strategic planning, we think that we want to hold off on that because we want to build a calendar that supports what comes out of our strategic plan. So, the other piece that we need to kind of talk about is because, I won't say that we're, next year without a doubt, or this coming summer, without a doubt, is a longer summer. After that, we're still essentially going the same number of days, right? So, we're just looping when we're going to school. But, how do we rethink summer school, right? Because if you think about research and research on the summer slide, did the legislature just make that worse?
Yep.
And what are, what mechanisms do we have to try to combat that? You know? So, might there be summer boot camps in late July and August? And I also know that, to some extent, the more that we're out, the more that presents challenges for families who have been there. So, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm pretty hesitant to shorten the number of student days at this, at this point. But, I'm really more interested in how a calendar could look different to support what the next iteration of strategic planning is going to be.
And that's not necessarily a lens that we've really looked through very much. You know, when you create a calendar, you're just kind of looking at days. You're counting to 174 and you're counting an additional eight for the teachers at that point in time. But, we're not with so much of a focus as, is what we're doing, are the decisions we're making, are they in the best interest of the whole child and of our community? And so, we want to look at that a little bit better, as opposed to just starting to plot things out there and be like, ah, it looks like we might need a break about then. Well, that might be true, maybe a break is needed if, but we want to make sure we're looking at that with a little bit more of a focus and an intentionality behind student achievement. So, I think summer school will probably look a little different. Although, we're not quite sure yet. More conversations need to be had.
Yes, because I want to talk to you about that too later.
So, more conversations will be had.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? Good?
So, do we have a?
Move to formally adopt the 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented. The calendar has 174 student contact days and 182 teacher contract days.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Insurance renewals and report.
All right. Basically, the bottom line is, I'll be here to recommend that we have no rate change, no coverage change. We met with the insurance committee and that was their recommendation as well. This is really a continuation of what we've been seeing for a number of years. So, you know, some of you have heard this spiel a lot, some of you, this is the first time. But, the bottom line is, we had five years way back decreasing fund balances, five years in a row, bottoming out in 2013. And then, in 2014, back then, we had $100 deductibles. So, you can see on this chart, around 2014 was when we started building the fund by making the plan changes and increasing the deductibles. We had to build, dig out of a big hole. So, we had to make some drastic changes in the early years. We had, you know, one of the more expensive plans at the time. But, over the, over these years, we haven't had to increase rates, you know, since 2015. So, we're coming back to, you know, at least maybe, you know, somewhere in the middle of the pack possibly. But, bottom line is, we're, you can see, we're making a lot of progress on our fund balance. On this slide here, we're projecting for 2020, a fund balance of $11.1 million. And that's based on loss ratios around 95%. It's important to look at this next slide and see the difference between a good year and a bad year. A good year is a loss ratio of maybe like 75%. A loss ratio, as a quick reminder, for all of the money that you take in on premiums from the district, the retirees, the employees, of all that money that you take in, what percentage of that do you pay out in claims? So, if you pay out 100%, your fund balance stays the same. If you pay out over 100%, your fund balance goes down, vice versa. So, a good year, 75%, the 2020 balance would be projecting out 13 million. A bad year, 106%, it would project out at 10 million. So, as you can see, when we're trying to predict from year to year, nobody knows if you're gonna have a good year, bad year, medium year. So, the difference between a good and a bad year is about $3 million in fund balance. So, anytime you see projections, you have to take that with a grain of salt. Because they, every year can vary greatly from what your actuarial, you know, best probability calculations are. And it's, there we go. And so, here, the projections put forth by USI show their best guess of where they think we're going to come in in 2020 is 11.4 million. And then, you can see the projections through 2024. If things would follow your normal actuarial calculations, that's where they think we would project at. So, if we can get that, you know, you're talking about a, a nice long run of stability for the employee paychecks as well as the district. You know, you look on the district side, we have around $8.4 million of expense. Well, you know, if, if you have to spike that by 10%, sort of like what we had to do back in 2015, that's an $800,000 hit to the district books. Even if it's just 5%. You guys have heard all of the percentages thrown around, you know, from year to year on how, you know, healthcare is exploding. Well, even at a 5% increase, you're talking about $400,000. We've had the luxury now of a number of years of no additional expense hitting the district. So, that's, that part is nice to have that stability. So, anyway, you, you're, you're familiar with, you know, this, this is just other data with, you know, what the actual coverages are for coinsurance, deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums that you can look at at your leisure. We show the, the rates for retirees and nine-month staff and 12-month staff. So, you can look at that for your own information. But, bottom line is, you know, really, once again, just, you know, the recommendation is, no rate change, no coverage change for this year.
Anyone have questions?
I will say that, you know, I was really pleased when, you know, we have grown a room full of people in that insurance committee and several of the people in there said that their insurance, our insurance was better than their, their working spouse from rather large companies too. You know, I think North West was one of them and I don't know where the other one was ever did, but, I was, I was pleasantly surprised.
Okay. We have a recommendation on this one too, right?
Yeah. Okay, move to recommend no rate change to the 2020 health insurance rates.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Transportation. Hello? What's that?
It's gonna be long.
35 seconds, huh?
No.
Maybe. First and foremost, thank you for the six buses you guys approved in February. That was nice, thank you. Second of all, I showed some, but not all. We did receive a plaque from D E S I for exemplary maintenance for the last 25 years for 90% or better.
Nice.
That's impressive.
And, just to cut, cut through most of it. What it is, is our inspection rates for the last, obviously, 20 plus, 25 years has been over 90. But, the last three years have been 99 or 100%. And we go through about 103,000 gallons of diesel fuel a year. And we do almost 1,800 field trips and activities. So, we're always on the move. But, other than that, you have the spreadsheet. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
I just have to say, you guys are impressive with what you do and we truly appreciate it. We really do.
We try our best.
You guys do well, very well.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, 693,000 miles a year.
And that's just on the gened buses. That doesn't count N S D or E C.
Of course, there's even more.
It's more. So, we do everything we can to keep them going and, and make them last as long as we possibly can and, and get them where they need to be, safely.
Yes, you got a good record. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Yes.
I've recommended that the board prove the transportation data report as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Have you been back in February for six and more buses?
It's looking pretty good. Sixty or six?
It's on the list, six.
Six more next year, right?
Yeah, February.
Okay.
It's looking pretty good that that'll happen.
I'm trying. I figured that's now.
Yeah, Marshall should have it in the budget. Thank you. All right, we got some policy revisions.
So, while the charter has resulted from some U S D A rate change changes.
Yep.
Motion to approve policy A C and E F as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That may be the fastest we've ever done policy.
Well, yeah, I mean, there wasn't anything, right?
Yeah.
Our meeting was five minutes.
Oh, was it? Yeah.
That's probably a record too.
So far, policy committee's been really easy.
All right. Criteria for performance excellence, so Baldrick, you continue, right?
We're back for round six.
Nice.
So, tonight, our topic's going to be about workforce. The, you have the full access to the presentation within board docs. We're just gonna hit on some high points because this would be, this is one of those areas, I think, we could spend a lot of time. And we did spend a lot of time in terms of the development and trying to really think about it. But, in just, in essence of time, we wanted to make sure that we could hit on some high points. But, we will come back around and then obviously do a deeper dive over the next year in these topics. So, just kind of keep that. Quick reminder, why do we, why are we focused on this? Are we, is our organization doing really as well as it can? How do we know? And obviously, what and how should we be doing in order to be more effective in strategic planning? Those are the questions we continue to ask.
Five point one is on, criteria is on workforce environment and how we're assessing our capacity and our capability of the needs of those individuals. And so, some things that Brian and I talked about with the team was, we have made sure that employees have the right certifications and qualifications for their jobs. We do have evaluation systems that are intalented and deployed to staff. There are walkthroughs that are informal and formal by principals and senior leaders. And we are revising and revamping onboarding and offboarding processes for employees. The big gap that we found is just that uniformity with having, you know, so many sites, trying to get where we have a lot more consistency versus that silo aspect that we talked about through many aspects of the criteria.
Another one of our big pieces was revolving around how do we recruit, hire, place and retain new workforce? And so, we've been engaging in some conversations with Jennifer Hansen, our new HR director, related to that. She's really taken that one by the reins and really has started to engage our post-secondary institutions who would be training up our, our next level of workforce. So, I think we all will kind of help in that process to build a better system. But, things that our HR department and others do is they attend job fairs. You know, they, we're doing interviews, we're screening lots of individuals. We also are posting jobs, you know, so that, you know, our goal is that we have a number of qualified individuals who apply for jobs, as opposed to looking through an entire list and saying, oh, we only have one or two people. That makes it pretty simple. But, that's not necessarily always generating the best workforce or the most qualified workforce. And in terms of a, of a gap, one of the things we've discussed is just the complete benefits package of it. We have made some significant strides and we know that there's more work left to do.
The next piece talks about how we're ensuring safety, health and security and accessibility of our workforce. So, we have a lot of programs and places and things that are in place for all employees. As Brian mentioned earlier in his PD report, we do have 4E training that we did for certified employees this year before school started. We have a safety planning and assessment team that also includes the county police department and Melville Fire as part of key stakeholders in that planning process where we go through each building. We have the committees and then we have the four and a quarter hours of annual online training that we do for all employees that are certified and classified in the district. Some of the gaps are just increasing the ADA accessibility throughout the district. We've had many conversations with Jennifer that the E A P is very underutilized for our staff throughout the district. And then, just as we continue to find those security opportunities in the nature of what we have to do with our building the facilities.
Our next continues to focus on our workforce and about the kinds of services, the benefits and the policies that we have. So, we do have a com- So we do have a comprehensive health plan, um, with regards to medical and dental and life and, uh, vision. Uh, we also have a district policy committee, so we're regularly discussing and revising policies uh, in terms of our employees, uh, as well as our students. Um, we've been, uh, we've had the benefit of obviously prop our money continuing to fund professional development opportunities within the district and so we've been, um, very blessed and supportive of that. As well as the concept like the leadership development program that we mentioned earlier, that that's a way to feed into the workforce and to develop the next generation of leaders. In terms of gaps, we do, you know, we still feel from a creative benefits perspective, we still have work to do. Uh, and also the employee health and mental fitness opportunities. Uh, we want our, how, all of our employees to be healthy, uh, not only physically but mentally and to try to find opportunities to make sure that they are taken care of themselves. Because when they're better taken care of, our kids are better taken care of.
Five point two focuses on engagement of the workforce and B one talks about how our learning and development system support our organizational needs and personal development of our members, manager, and leader. So we discuss that we have the shared mission and value and vision segment in the, in the district. We have monthly all hands trans- uh, transparency meetings that includes all the senior leadership, all the building leadership directors, uh, certified and classified that are available to see what's going on systems-wise as well as with academics. And then, as we've mentioned many times, the leadership development program that Brian facilitates has had a powerful impact on our employees, uh, and that program planning. The gap that we talked about was empowering the employees to take those intelligence risks and make effective decisions just by the structured process that we have in the district. Um, so that they're certain that they're making the right decision and they have that ability to do it on their own.
And I think our last piece is about career progression. So not only do our, you know, not just looking at our teachers and thinking, oh, those, that's our teaching workforce, but that's our next generation potentially of our leadership workforce. And so we don't always think about, you know, succession plans and things of that nature, um, but we're starting to have more conversations revolving around that and trying to develop better systems. So there are things we do to continuously support our employees, our workforce, and that includes tuition reimbursement, includes professional development opportunities. So you're investing in people to be able to make them better. Uh, we do have mentoring and shadowing opportunities for our employees as well as something as simple as annual goal setting or their, you know, their student learning objectives. So those things that really generate them having success in their job, whatever their job may be, and then to continue to promote goals and growth. Um, a good and a bad here, I guess, can be, we are a large organization. And so sometimes I think in large organizations, there are, there's ample opportunity. While at the same time, if you don't have a significant turnover in terms of your leadership positions, then you don't have a significant opportunity. So finding ways for others to have opportunities to be problem solvers and to develop their leadership skills so that we can plan for those future leaders is one of the goals of the leadership development program. But we're trying to find ways to be able to empower others, so it's not just, we have to do this program to be a leader. You don't, everyone can have leadership skills and our job is to try to continue to support people as they develop their, their leadership skills. So you can see, we've, uh, we've wrapped up the workforce focus and next month will be coming at you with the operations. We're almost finished.
With the overview.
With the, with the overview, it's only taken nine months. So we'll come back around again and talk more of a deep dive. I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely.
Does Melville have an E A P program, an employee assistance program?
There is an employee assistance program. Uh, it is underutilized, it's about three to four, three to four percent less than what our industry average would be in terms of taking advantage of that. Um, and so that will be a piece that between communications and H R, they'll be working on this year to promote that, that opportunity. Uh, it's been.
Just the value that it adds.
The value that it adds and to some extents, like leaving money on the table. And so we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of those opportunities because it would all be one hundred percent purely in the benefit of our workforce.
It's a fantastic resource.
It is, yeah, and just like I said, it's, it's underutilized, but we feel like we can, our communication will improve upon that and I think you'll have more people who understand what it is and then figure out if it's right for them. Yes.
How many people have taken the Baldridge training so far and what's the plan for the next year?
So we are up to, um, four, uh, who have done it.
One's currently on.
One's finishing up a site visit. Um, and so we have, uh, a future plan in place to look beyond that and start thinking about building levels and start looking at some of our high schools and assistant principals potentially in there. Um, we are really trying to be very intentional about embedding the Baldridge criteria into a lot of things, including our school improvement plans. So they are hearing it over and over and over again and starting to make some connections and like looking at students, not necessarily calling them customers, but to have an understanding that who, you know, it's the servant leadership model, who do we serve? Our jobs as employees are to be able to serve our community. We do that by teaching them, administering to them, providing support, whether it's we're making meals, whether we're, you know, driving the bus, whether we are mowing the grass, whatever it is we do is that we, we, it's not just a job, we serve individuals. And so we're really trying to stress more of the criteria and starting to have, make connections. It's hard to do it in a large organization because you can't just send a ton of people to go be a trainer for a week to be able to do it, uh, plus the extra work that goes before that week.
You've got to lay, lay out the prototype process before you can start.
That is correct. So we're working on that prototype process and we'll have some more people that will be in that training schedule for next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So their last name doesn't have to be Smith in order to go?
No, Dr. De Kemper, Dr. De Kemper has already finished his up in Andrew Cooner.
Yeah, but I heard he's applying to change his name.
Yeah, he, yeah, he's, he's not here this evening, but, um, he told us in advance he was going.
He's in court getting his name changed.
That might be the case, but not because of Baldridge planning. Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
All right. Now it's time for our book club, right?
Yeah.
Book club. I've read my book so well, it's falling apart. So deep. Deep, deep, deep. Cardinals?
Do I make announcements?
Top of the six. Are you gonna pick us up or do you want us to pick us up?
I'm sweet for saying.
Some comments from the book, if you wanna react to those.
I, I would, in response to that, I would say yes for the most part. Unfortunately, that's still what the driving force, I think, in our educational system is college.
Right, that's true.
You are hearing, you are hearing more and more about, um, trade schools and facts and all of those programs. I've heard more about it in the last year than.
Yeah, agreed.
So I think until Dr. Gaines came in with all the innovation and all the changes that the district has made, absolutely, that was the first statement is what, um, our schools were, maybe not, and me specifically as a parent, also piling on for sure.
Yeah.
But.
Well, and you're typical, you're the typical parent of that.
Wow.
Age group.
I, I, I mean, no, no, I agree, right.
It's how we were brought up. If you don't go to college, you're not successful.
This mindset is, yeah, same, yeah.
But, um, so I think, but I, but I think that is changing, um, as you said.
Yeah. When I was reading the book, there was a commercial that came on about this mom selling her car so her kid could have the dream of going to college, which was really kind of interesting that, that came on. So it's not just us, it's just a cultural thing. I think it's a broad cultural thing.
One of the things it did in the book though, it kind of following through the examples of the schools we went to, that message is really tied to socioeconomic status. The more established the schools, you know, college was the message. The, the, the schools that were maybe more rural or, or not quite as cosmopolitan, there was a more, more discussion of career. I was, kind of parenthetically, I was looking at the results from the, from the Melville talks type of thing. And what was interesting is, is the, the concern for college wasn't real high.
Not at all.
In the pecking order. So I think that kind of, kind of says that maybe the people we're working with to, to think, hear what they think about the district, maybe don't buy that. Elite, because I would have expected to be that, the top of everybody's concern, we're not getting kids ready for college. And it wasn't there.
You know, when you consider all these schools that have such things as, um, uh, the wrong, not the wrong, but curriculums that are pretty much geared towards college-bound students. My question is, as educators, if there were no state requirements for us to follow, what would we, what would we throw out right now to make room for better stuff?
Good question. So, sort of teasing that question?
Oh, yeah?
A bit teasing it from the sense of, okay, we're gonna ask you these questions and you're telling us all this stuff. So what are we gonna get rid of so we can do these things?
Right, exactly.
Zero sum game.
Well, that was my biggest question that I drew from this is, you know, if we didn't have the state breathing down our necks on what we have to have and have to do and, and what's required of us, what would we get rid of immediately to, to put in the things that would really, you know, benefit our students?
That's gonna be interesting when we get to that point because it's probably gonna look really scary. And people are gonna maybe, I would imagine some people might.
Change always is.
Not, like, be wanting to do it, but still wanting both because they're, you're so attached to, you know,
Well, I, I don't think it'd ever take away the opportunity, you know, I think that probably we would, we would just have, you know, pathways. You know, I think this one school, which, let's see, which one was it, the Olympia, Olympic High School in Charlotte, um, is a, a large comprehensive public school drawing kids from mostly lower and middle-income families. And as soon as you walk in, you realize it's not your typical school. It's organized into five career academies. So the school is actually divided up into five different sections. One is on biology, health, and public administration. The second one is executive leadership and entrepreneurial development. The third one is technology, entrepreneurship, and advanced manufacturing. Fourth is math, engineering, engineering, technology, and science. And fifth is the school of arts and technology. Brilliant. That just blows my mind, that's every.
Former assistant superintendent for innovation, we're here today.
Really?
I've been to five that schools, but one of their other schools organized the same way. Um, which is, they're very interesting, they learn a lot, they learn what to do, what not to do. One of the things that they really messed up on when they did that is they actually created, they, so they've got the five academies and each academy had its own principal.
Oh.
So, you know, and kind of like my notion of silos. Well, how about five silos, all operating separately within the same building? It's kind of what it had, so over the, over the last two years, it's now a more, um, umbrella piece within one principal, about five separate.
The, the concern I would have with that is what if you think you wanna be an aerospace engineer and then you get in there and you decide you would hate it and you wanna do something else? You are able to change, but then you have to change to a whole different, but, yeah.
Better to find out in high school.
True.
You know, than after that, after you've invested six years in college.
Six.
You know, well, probably, I don't know, four, six, I don't know, what does it take to be an astroengineer? I don't know.
Astroengineer.
What did, what did you say?
I think I said astrophysicist.
Okay, an astrophysicist, what does it take? You know, can you do that in four years? I don't know.
I'm not sure, I'm not that smart.
So, you know, and I, and I could see our district in here and so many of the places where, you know, you wanna go guilty, you know, like, uh, in reality, schools prepare students for their college application.
Yeah.
Not college.
That's really true.
Yeah.
Career is strictly an afterthought.
Now, I would like to have seen a few more small, kind of nondescript schools in there. I'd like to see like, like from my hometown, there's a small town that's basically agricultural. So what's the direction you do with your students there? What do you prepare them for? Because the majority of them are not gonna go to college.
But shouldn't they all have the option? Shouldn't it be that just because they're in a rural versus a city versus a suburban versus a affluent versus a poverty-type area that everybody still has the opportunities where.
Has to deal with the culture of the people there.
Yeah, but there's always gonna be countercultural people.
Yeah, but culture trumps strategy.
Uh, without going that high.
And also for some rural, some of the areas, just access.
Yeah.
Access to higher education is along the same way. Not some of the people of the first.
I think one of the stories talked about, or at least touched on something that I've always thought was a good way to go about it, which is if somebody can come out of high school with a workable degree, so a trade degree, maybe something that gets them into the electrical field, where you can make a good amount of money as an electrician and go to night school, which was how my dad got his electrical engineering degree, is a lineman for Wisconsin Electric, it's, you know, you can be making, for linemen, actually where I'm at now, it's like seventy grand a year and still be working on a college degree for something. It's, as opposed to going two hundred grand dead over four years and fighting back from that. I thought the other thing, uh, right, I thought the other thing that was really interesting too was the, one that talked about the M I T graduates, the electrical guys that, uh, they gave them, uh, was it a battery, wire, and a light bulb? And none of them could actually make the light bulb turn on. As an electrical engineer who didn't study that stuff in high school, I actually had that happen during my co-op job, so thankfully, it was in my sophomore year semester, uh, summer.
Yeah.
In my first job, I was in a ceiling trying to figure out how to wire some stuff up, just completely confused by how the wires came into these things and went out from them and, you know, finally figured it out. But that's real, that practical application thing, you can get stuck in books and be getting A's on theoretical things and not understand a bit about how it works. Thankfully, I'm not like that anymore, now I can wire things.
Now there's YouTube.
Yes, there's YouTube.
Sheet your way through.
Every, every car repair I do.
As far as how, how much they, they should go to school, did, did you all pick up on this experiment that they ran with these kids from this high-end school?
Where they tested them again?
Yeah, they tested them at the end of the school year and the average grade was a B plus. And they, as soon as they came back from summer break, they gave them the same test, well, they, they did adjust, um, let's see, how did they adjust a little bit? They, they removed low-level material that they didn't expect the students to retain. But, um, uh, on the test of just the essentials, the very same things they tested out at B plus at the end of the school year, they came back with an F in September.
Yeah.
I think there's other studies that also show that same kind of thing.
There's a big message there.
Absolutely.
Big message.
Message, memorizing them upfront for a test versus really understanding.
Exactly.
It's interesting that, um, there was a point where it talked about, um, uh, superintendents explored the potential bias for academia's style over real-world insight. With lives at stake, they'd rely on informed advice from a C T E student with construction expertise, not flowery pros, pros?
Pros.
From an A P English star, yet in the hierarchy of school, it's the A P student who is viewed as gifted.
Right.
So, you know, our perception is, yeah, skewed.
When lives are on the line, who are you gonna trust?
So that, in other words, the.
Not to take anything away from.
The lower-level intelligence kid had to beef up the essay in order to make it better when the kid that was writing it in the first place was an A P English student, right?
I think part of that's just experience.
Yeah, there was, yeah, I, I read that in there too.
I think the bulk of that's just experience, what did they get the focus of their, their training on? Was it writing it in a nice way and getting an A in English or was it?
Right.
Understanding how those things work practically.
Well, and this, this particular paragraph cracked me up. Uh, studying material they don't care about, won't retain, and won't use later. Consider these, the quadratic equation, iambic pentameter.
Yeah, that argument with my daughter just a few months ago.
Periodic table, who's used that? We talked about this the other night. The periodic table, progressive era foreign vocabulary, Newton's laws, diagramming sentences. Who's ever done that since they got out of grade school?
I raised kids.
You did? I'd have to know why, Larry. I really would. That's really weird.
All kidding aside, the greatest thing, the diagramming sentences, it may, it's, it's a great way to learn how to program. All kidding aside, when you learn how to part stuff, parse stuff apart, it's phenomenal what it does.
I'll take your word for it.
It actually helps with foreign language too.
Um, dissecting an earthworm.
Oh.
You know, come on, but, what-
The, the thing I got out of this was that, were they really, was he trying to say tongue-in-cheek that you can't teach everybody the same way? Because if you do, there's gonna be fall off, there's gonna be gaps. Because the other thing I saw, when I saw that, was that what they're measuring is the kids with the photographic memories, the idiotic memories. They just, you know, are great trivia players because they never forget anything. They may not know how to use it, but they don't forget it. And I think that was the other message that-
Is that a gift or a curse?
It's practical, hands-on application is where you learn and retain.
And I think to tie into that, where it says, our kids study what's easy to test, not what's important to learn. Um, and it's easy to test factual content and low-level procedures. So, that winds up defining the curriculum. It's, yeah, you know, you can't, on paper, A, B, you know, multiple-choice test, leadership skills and leadership development, for example. And that's, and communication skills, which are all very critical in being life, you know, prepared for life. Yeah.
It is interesting with the standards. I mean, there's certain things that definitely make sense for everybody to learn. English reading, learning how to learn, math basics, all of that stuff. But where does that start to get into those things that don't matter as much?
Right.
Where we're kind of force-feeding something that isn't the best way to do it.
We talked about this the other night after the, um, state of the district, when we got to our individual tables. You know, when you think back, think about the brilliant, even though they didn't have any choice, but the brilliance of the one-room schoolhouse where the first graders were hearing what the eighth graders were doing. And some of the, some of that had to stay with them, you know, and, and, and it was like that for eight years or six, however many years they went to, you know, elementary school. So, there was some advanced learning for them in areas that they probably were too young for or whatever. But they got some of it anyway. And so, I don't know, I just thought that was a unique, uh, concept, you know, where you get more, more than what you're bargaining for, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Um, and then, um, finally, the, the last thing I'm gonna mention about this is that, um, um, this Looney guy, you know, this man named Looney, uh, he quoted Buckminster Fuller, "You never change things by fighting the existing reality. To change something, you need to build a new model that makes the existing model obsolete." So, I guess that's what's gonna, I guess that's what we're gonna have to try to, somebody's gonna have to try to do at some point is make a new model.
Yeah, they're gonna need-
Because nobody's gonna-
It's kind of like Mosaic, right?
Well, nobody's gonna sign on.
Showing it works so that other people want it.
Gotta build a new model.
But the challenge is you're, you're trying to tune a model for something that doesn't exist.
But what you said, so I wanna comment on that we need bad high school, how do I say that word?
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy.
To train kids for-
Bad, not bad.
I mean, so true, because that's the concern I've always brought up to you. What do we do if we're being so innovative in, in the K through twelve? And then they go to college and their grade hinges ninety-eight percent on three exams.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, I will tell you, as a compliment to the district, Maddie said, wow, I didn't realize what great teachers I had in high school, um, after being in college for, since-
Wow.
August tenth.
Yeah.
Um, in chemistry, biology, all those things. She's like-
Nice.
They're not always college students.
Right. And so she, I mean, she, she's like, I, well, she used a strong word. I disliked my teacher in this subject in Ed Oakville. And she's like, oh, my gosh, I need to go apologize to her because now I love her. I mean, that's-
Right, when you say that.
But, but anyway, so we're doing, to me, it sounds like comparing it to one university, doing a better job teaching the kids already. But there's no doubt that, that if we, but we almost have to teach them, I still feel like we have to teach them in high school how to take tests and how, because until all the universities change.
That's not gonna change.
In fact, after we-
I think there-
It's the problem. You can't be fresh.
Don't you think that there's starting to be a, at least an awareness of this in our universities? You know, that it's, that it's gonna, because it was not gonna do us any good to raise, or, you know, to edu- or send kids out there to, um, in this new way of learning when the old way is the way the colleges are operating. I mean, what do you know about that? Sorry, I didn't pick your brain.
One of my best friends is, you know, is a college admissions back and, uh, they will admit some of the top, top kids in their region. I mean, they will actively recruit them, but they do opportunities for those kids to come in throughout their high school career. So, while we know they have kids with top grades, they're also trying to develop their leadership capacity because they see them as future student leaders of their university as well. So, I think it really varies from place to place.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, we, we talk about, and, you know, you read the book and people don't, it's all about ACT score. It's all about ACT score, all about ACT score. If it's all about BCT score, foreign languages not on the ACT test,
Nope.
why, why is that a requirement to get into college? Right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, and I would argue that even though college says it wants two years of foreign language, you knock out a thirty-four on your ACT, that probably didn't-
Yeah.
I mean, that's just my, that's just my belief. I, I think it's different from place to place, college to college. But I also think that more and more colleges are seeing a greater number of non-traditional students. So, they're allowing these non-traditional students to take coursework at their colleges, some who have been out of high school for a long time. So, what was the admission criteria for them? Did they look back on their high school performance from fifteen years ago and say, um?
You were a pretty good student.
Or, or do they look at, well, what have you been doing with your life? And what, what is the work? What have you shown and what are you willing to put in to move them to your next stage, right? So, one of the, I mean, I know there was a comment or, you know, a short, little snippet on about, about a guy who college at twenty-seven, right? What did his admission look like?
Yeah.
You know, how did he get, get admitted? Can you take a look at, what does admission look like for students coming in on a GI bill? Right? So, there are different pathways to college, but because we think of this runway up to college, oftentimes we only see it one way. Another way is, another kind of friend from college, homeschooled this kid, well, daughter's not college age yet, but the son went to kindergarten, traditional school, but got homeschooled the rest of the time. Did go to South Tech because they had a programming area that he was very interested in, full ride or roll. Right? And so, what, what was it? What were his grades and what was his GPA? And where did he, so he stacked up in different ways, right? He stacked up because his robotics team did really, really well and he got exposure that way. He's, he was involved in some other pieces. So, sometimes I worry that we only see one way?
Yeah, so are we gonna need to have a forum of a college admissions, uh, people, you know, to start finding out where, where's this going with them? I mean, we kind of know where it's gonna be going with secondary education, but, um, what do they think? That's what I'd like to know. You know, is there, is there a conference of college admissions people, uh, you know, once a year or, you know, can-
Yeah.
What, what are they saying?
They think all of those kinds of things, right? Because what do you, what do you want to make your university look good, right? Communications committee, talking about branding, how am I gonna brand my university? How do I brand my university as a top tier? While talking about the academic prowess of the kids of my freshman class, are those non-traditional students part of the freshman class and how do they fit into that mix?
See, this is really-
I think, I think colleges are more willing to do some admissions things than what we can talk about. So, one of the things that I kind of think about is with our early college program. If those kids are walking out of high school with an associate's degree, that's a transfer student. That's a different pathway into college than out of high school. So, I, I think sometimes we just have barriers on the way. We go to think about what are all of the different on-ramps in the college?
That's true.
Or what are the, all of the on-ramps into some career pathways too?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, um, uh, there's a guy, um, we're gonna have him here from next week at a meeting. And, you know, you think about traditional pathway of a principalship, teacher, principal, right? Well, he was a high school student, custodian. Lionel was custodian, worked his way through college to be a teacher and then a principal, all in the same school.
Yeah, read that.
It's a different pathway.
Yeah, you see that in healthcare a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
People start out as custodians or secretary, you know, answering the phone or whatever. And then they get part, they tie into tuition reimbursement that's offered at that hospital. And some of them go all the way.
That's a good way to add employee load, if you can.
Yeah.
Especially when you help, help them advance.
I think this also starts to make the smaller colleges and universities look more attractive because they're a lot more flexible in the way that, and I know I've had some, I've written some recommendations for kids for computer science schools. They're small schools. They can go in and literally go into project-based education their freshman year. And that's kind of the whole, the whole cadre, and they pick up other courses on the side, but that's their focus. And it's, you know, do you wanna do that or do you wanna go to, go, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in debt and go to Illinois or Iowa State or, or Iowa or Mizzou or something like that and go through the structure and not have that flexibility? It's, it's, it's really eye-opening to start looking at how these, these organ, how they're organized and what they're offering.
That's the B B B A plus program. You go to community college, you go in as a junior or a senior, you're, it's a totally different path to get in. You're, you don't have to go through all of-
Yeah.
The essay writing and, um, and all of the things.
Go through the angst here where it's cheaper and then go.
Yeah.
Go make your leap.
Right.
You had a slide up there before that asked a question about what maybe disagreed with. And, uh, so a lot of it did resonate with me. A big thing was the affluency part. After doing that study that I've shared with all of you about the twenty-six different factors associated with school rooms, affluency, everything else, what actually matters for ACT scores. Ninety-one percent accuracy is free reduced lunch and assessed property values divided by the number of students. Ninety-one percent within five percent. I mean, that basically says those two things matter a ton. And that came out really big in this, the more affluent kids getting the ACT tutors and, uh, you know, just a whole bunch of things there. But I also kind of look at it, I don't think it's all bad. Um, there's like the thing of if we're teaching kids how to think through things and we're doing it with, like, just take project-based learning, we tend to learn and retain things more when we're using them as opposed to just memorizing them. So, kids are gonna come out of Mosaic probably with better retention than what they might from a traditional type of elementary school. And hopefully now with the middle schools, we'll see that same thing, hopefully at the high schools at some point. But just because they go through that kind of education early on, doesn't mean they're gonna fail in college. In fact, they might do better. They might actually be able to figure out the system and the process because there's a game in college too that you gotta kind of figure out. That helps. Um, sometimes it's professor by professor basis, but I guess that was something that I kind of just took out of it was I don't think it's as bad as sometimes it gets made out to be. That there are good things in here. We can definitely improve a ton. But ways we're currently moving, things we're doing at this K through twelve can have good impacts all the way through.
Well, when I look back on my education, all the way from kindergarten through my master's degree, I'll tell you what, I could probably fit in one hand what was really useful.
Yeah.
I think there was a thing in electrical engineering that they said, uh, most people use like five to ten percent of what they learned through a four-year degree.
Uh, we were talking about that at the listening session and I think Marshall brought it up. Um, talking about what, you know, that was one of the questions, what was useful or what wasn't, et cetera. And my thought was, you know, when I think about my college experience, I think the most valuable part of my college experience was learning to navigate living on my own and managing myself.
And, and that's the biggest-
Leadership opportunities I got through my sorority, and it wasn't, had anything to do with my coursework. And in fact, when I got out of college with my degree, I was told, get some more hands-on experience if you want this job. And it wasn't about what I learned.
Right, exactly.
Sitting in the class, it was, I had to do other things then to advance myself and-
And that's why the results of the survey came as no surprise to me. That's all you ever hear. Prepare my kid better for life. Prepare him better for life, you know, well.
But I, um, back to our district in relation to the book, I think we're doing such a better job now teaching kids, so if a kid does come from a socioeconomic environment where there is no college experience, um, we are now taking kids to campuses and letting them look around and experience it or taking them to, teaching them, um, hands-on stuff, electric, electrical work or carpentry or whatever, giving them, exposing them to all kinds of avenues. Whereas, I mean, you know, I'm, I've told the story lots of times, how I grew up in the city and I was in the middle of mandatory busing and I literally, no one talked to me about college ever, 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 ever. And so, I was a non-traditional college student. I worked and went to school at night and it took me a really long time, but I did it. And, um, I mean, there's all kinds, I don't even remember how I got in. I, I mean, I didn't have twelve credit hours from a community college. I just, I guess I was in an adult program, basically. But, um, I think showing kids all the different options, especially having such a high ELL, um, population, that their parents definitely are not gonna know the trad, I mean, they will from word of mouth, but they didn't experience their traditional college experience in the United States.
Right.
So, I think we're doing a good job giving options and showing them options. And I, personally, I think that's just been in the last two to three years.
Yeah.
With our college and career readiness program.
Yeah.
I, I almost think my college experience must be a little bit different too, or maybe it's the profession I'm in. But I wouldn't say that I don't use what I learned in college or that there's very little of it.
I can say that. No, I, no, I don't, I don't mean that. I just mean-
Foundation.
But you're a STEM student.
I'm a STEM student?
I mean, true fact, right?
Yeah, you're right. So, understanding the technical, that's a big part. I have to understand those things or I can't really be innovative with anything.
No, that was not what I meant. I mean, we had, we had to retain some of what we learned in college or we wouldn't be doing, you know, really good. Of the great, for the greatest majority of it, you know, things particularly that were required back when I was in school, you never use them. You never use them.
I think it depends on, like Kevin was saying, what profession you're in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I will say, I think I use psychology more than any of my other classes. I hit nine credits of that.
Communication.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Actually, music, music theory and computer science was terrific.
Well, it's interesting.
Plus, history's great for trivia nights.
It is.
How do we do? Do we get an A?
Periodic table.
Do we get an A? How do we do? Do we get an A, how do we do?
It's a book study, you know, with tests.
It hit home a little too often, but...
All right, anything else, any closing thoughts?
Baseball score, four to one, Cardinals.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. That was chapters three and four. Okay, uh, moving into open period for patron comments on non-agenda items, we had nobody sign up for that. And I think we are ready to do authorization for a closed session.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meeting and corrections and approval of same and items under the Missouri revised statute six-ten point zero-two-one subsections one through twenty-one, and six-ten point zero-two-two subsections one through six. Lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, statute six-ten point zero-two-one-nine-two, and individually identifiable personnel records and performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, statute six-ten point zero-two-one subsection thirteen. Tori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peggy, yes.
All right, we're in closed session, thank you.
Let's go into the room where it handles. You're welcome. Did you get...
Yes, I did.
Lisa, did you get a charge out of it?